All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is 5:30 PM, June 21st, Tuesday, and we have three back-to-back study sessions, with the first one being on our tree ordinance. We'll be talking with our Corporation Counselor, a little bit with our DPW Director, and even different members of the audience. There's been a lot of questions that have come up in regards to our tree ordinance, what is allowed, what is not allowed, what trees can be taken out, what trees cannot be taken out, when our administration can take them out, timeframe to take out the stumps, et cetera, et cetera. So I felt that we would do a study session so we could get some clarification from administration in regards to this for our residents, and also give the opportunity for some of the council members to put in some input and then possibly make some changes in our ordinance. So this particular one is just a study session, there'll be no voting on us, but I want to go ahead and get it started.
He's got a question.
Who's got a question, I'm sorry?
Councilman Muscat.
Yeah, we'll go ahead. Ray, you want some input in the beginning?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I know we've discussed this before with Corporation Counsel about... But since this is only a study session, I don't see why we can't have our input on this, the tree ordinance, I mean...
Wait, Ray, Ray, you got cut off when you said, "I know we discussed it with Corporation Counselor," and then you got cut off for about two sentences.
But being a study session, I don't see why we can't be involved with this.
You're talking about in terms of being on Zoom?
Yeah.
That's the problem, it says that people are supposed to be physically present who are part of the public body.
You want to do that if you don't mind, sort of?
I didn't hear him.
Yeah, he's...
Basically, as I've stated before, if someone is a member of the public body, namely one of the council members, they should be physically present because Zoom doesn't recognize... or I'm sorry, the Open Meetings Act does not recognize participation by Zoom for members of the public body except if it's military service. So we kind of create a difficulty because we're kind of doing something that's not acknowledged at that point by the Open Meetings Act, and I think it would be imprudent to do so.
Even if you were to comment as a resident, if you wanted to?
It doesn't...
Can't do it?
You're still a member of the public body, I don't...
Okay.
You know, we can't...
Well, being honest, I can't comment as a resident?
You're still a member of the public body, Councilman. I mean, I don't know how you, you know, can avoid that you're a member of the public body.
You know, so why even be here for me then?
Council Chair.
I mean, this is ridiculous, and I couldn't even participate as a resident of the city when discussions are being opened, I mean... This is... I mean, I could keep quiet during a whole meeting, but to go up as a resident, I should be able to speak as a resident. It's still my right as a resident to speak at the end when it's open to the public.
The issue is whether or not you're engaged in deliberations, and if you're engaged in deliberations, you need to be present.
But we're not having deliberations today, it's a study session.
But you are... Deliberations are discussions that go up to making a decision, and...
Okay, everybody have a good evening.
Hold on, hold on, one second, Ray. Council Chair, yeah, please. Gary, let's just say he does give his opinion while he's on Zoom, right? What could happen to this meeting?
Well, it... Who knows what would end up happening because it's not something that's actually recognized and authorized by the Open Meetings Act.
I'm gonna take the risk for you, Ray.
So let's put it this way, let me ask this question, if you don't mind, Council Chair. I stayed for this whole meeting, and I take all the input, and when we go to vote on this, I'm gonna get a vote.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, we're not gonna vote.
But we're not voting today.
So how wrong would it be for me to have a vote if I don't get an input, as a resident or as a council person?
I agree. Okay, but just to be fair, just to be fair, Ray, keep in mind, this is not Gary's rule, this is state rule.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, Council Chair, I can leave this meeting right now, and in next week, if this comes on the agenda, I'll vote with not knowing anything.
Well, obviously, you have a right to listen, I presume he has a right to listen.
He can listen.
Yeah, you could listen, you just can't deliberate.
I understand that, but what happens if I decide I don't want to listen? I'm still gonna come next week and vote.
Okay.
I'm still gonna be able to vote next week.
Unfortunately, Ray, look, Ray, I agree with you, but unfortunately, I didn't make this rule or law, neither did Gary, so we're just following the rules, unfortunately.
We need somebody to fight that rule.
I disagree with the rule, but it's the rule and the law.
Is it an opinion though? Yeah, maybe change one day.
Gary, Councilman's asking, is it your opinion or is that the actual rule?
The actual rule is that members of the public body have to end up being present during any meeting. That's the Open Meetings Act requirement.
Or in person?
Yes. So what we're doing in terms of hybrid meetings is something that we've decided to do in order to allow other people to potentially participate or, you know, be involved in a meeting who are not members of the public body. All the council members are members of the public body.
And they have to be.
Exactly. So that's where you come into the difficulty. The difficulty is, is that essentially what you're saying is, well, this is the rule, and in absence of the rule, then maybe everyone could end up participating who's a member of the public body by Zoom. But right now, everyone who's a member of the public body who's supposed to be participating has to participate in person, and that's the only way they can end up showing up.
So let's end this discussion, I'm sorry, Ray, I mean, it's the law, so it's not nothing I control or Gary's control.
No, I understand, but I'm just disappointed.
So we have to respect it. We could disagree with it, but we have to respect it.
I want to be able to do this, but you know, and next week, if this stuff comes on the agenda, I'm gonna vote regardless.
Okay.
Be right or wrong.
No problem. All right. So at this particular point, Gary, if you don't mind, if you could just give us just a general synopsis in regards to the tree ordinance that we have in place today, and then we're gonna have some of the council members talk about the concerns that they've had with the tree ordinance, and then I'm gonna allow our DPW Director to give his input, and maybe even Mariana with the Chief of Staff, maybe possibly she could give her input if she'd like. Our mayor is at a meeting right now, so he will not be joining us today. But if you could give us just a general idea, and I know you sent it to us, but to the members of the audience, just a general two, three-minute synopsis of as far as what our ordinance is today.
Well, I'm more...
The main points.
Yeah, I'm more prepared actually to address the Canton Township decision that came down from the Sixth Circuit and how it ends up impacting our ordinance. Basically, our ordinance has certain requirements with regard to tree plantings being required under certain circumstances in order to get a permit, and the other get permits in terms of development. This ordinance, I think, is very similar to one that was used by Seacrest Wardle and for other communities, and I think it was actually borrowed by Canton Township because Kristin Kolb, who's the Township Attorney, has been for a while, used to be, actually did some work here, she was an associate over at Seacrest Wardle. So they incorporated essentially a similar ordinance. That portion of the ordinance was struck down, not because the court said it was impossible for it to end up being justified, but because the township, Canton Township, had not done what was necessary to justify that. And as a result, certain portions of our ordinance are of questionable validity, and we should end up changing them, and part of the reason for mentioning this and wanting to talk to the council's body is because if the council's body is going to take a direction of a more, "Look, your home is your castle," and we've had this, I remember when the ordinance was adopted, there were two different schools of thought. There were some people who were like, "You should be able to cut down any tree that's on your property," except maybe that's stuff that, the trees that are in the boulevard or city right-of-way because it's the city right-of-way. And we should end up having control over that, and we do have control over that. But if you otherwise want to take down a tree, you should be able to take down a tree. And then there were other people who were on the council who said, "No, we need trees because otherwise we're gonna get flooded out because trees absorb a lot of water, and we have problems with flooding both in the south end of the city and the north end of the city, and getting rid of all the trees is gonna potentially end up leading to increased flooding." So that was the prevailing sentiment, and I don't know if it still is, or to the degree which it is, before I would end up, you know, revisiting the different provisions here that are of questionable validity.
Okay, so one of the concerns I've had with the tree ordinance that's come up a lot, and I'm sure other council members, it's come up for them, is when a resident contacts DPW and they have a tree in front of their home in the easement part, and they want that tree, for whatever reason, whether it's shedding, you know, too many leaves, whether it's the sycamore with the little stuff that falls off of the trunks...
Right.
And then creates havoc as far as the water, you know, flowing away in the street and what have you is concerned. But for whatever reason, if a resident wants to take out a tree at their own expense, because a lot of times we're, because of the lack of man or woman power sometimes, and sometimes equipment, DPW can't, you know, sometimes they're three, four years away, or two years, whatever it is, it's multiple years, away from being able to do it. But let's say it's a healthy tree, and a resident wants to take out a healthy tree and put it in a replacement tree that they feels, you know, makes their home look more beautiful, they're just something nicer. Why can't they do something like that? Why is that not allowed? We're not talking about just at their own expense, that's all another conversation, but I'm talking about asking for it to be taken out, well, actually, if it's a healthy tree, I know DPW will not take it out. If they want to take it out themselves, I'm saying at their own expense.
But replacing it with a new tree?
Replacing it with a new tree.
So I saw...
A six footer.
Can I add on to this?
Yeah, please.
So, you know, the phone calls that I'm receiving is, a lot of these trees are dead. The branches, I go up and down Hess, and I go up and down, like Merrick Street, and I see these trees that are big, bulgy, and the branches are falling, and they're breaking, and they're falling on people's cars. We don't have the manpower or woman power to be able to bring these trees down. But I could, you know, I've told residents, eventually, there needs to be some type of ordinance where the city will allow you to pull a permit to remove the tree by an actual tree company within, say, three months. You must have that trunk removed and replaced with a new tree. Now, I didn't say that you're allowed to, but that's something to that degree which would make sense to a lot of residents, where either the city can try to take it down if we can afford to get to it, and if not, then let the homeowner go out there, take it down, and replace it with a new tree as long as they're putting a tree within three months.
Yeah, I think the difficulty with that is that replacing a tree, especially like landmark trees, is really not something that you can easily do. At least, that's the way I understand it, and that's the way it was presented when this originally came up years ago. You have like a really old tree, it really absorbs a lot of water, it really adds, you know, you can't just put in a new planting and think that somehow or other, that new tree is gonna end up making all the difference and make up for that missing tree because trees take decades to...
We're not asking for every tree in the neighborhood to be removed, it's just the ones that are dying.
Well, if they're dying, then potentially we could end up revisiting that, but then that, or visiting, revisiting that, but I think, I think that has sometimes been an issue where people have actually killed their trees in order to basically be able to have them subject to removal. You know, they've girdled them, they basically have ended up stripping all of the bark on all around. We've had, I'd say probably at least two times, I specifically remember being involved in those situations over the years.
And that's completely wrong, and it's heinous, in my opinion. But how many people do we know across the city with the thousands and thousands of trees? How many people are actually doing that to the tree? There are a lot of trees, Mr. Miyaki, in the city that are dead, that are falling apart, and realistically could be hazardous to the city.
Right. I think the issue becomes then that if they're in the city right-of-way, I think we do have... I don't think that the Sixth Circuit decision ends up actually altering that. I think we have, as a city, a state constitutional right to end up controlling our right-of-ways. So I think that it's something that we can really regulate, but we could change the ordinance under those circumstances to allow for private removal. My sense would be, however, that perhaps the people who want to do it would end up having to bear...
The cost.
The cost, and everything would have to end up being verified. This would not be something done, you know, after the fact, because we've had that issue come up a lot of times.
Well, they would still have to pull permits, obviously.
Exactly, but it would also have to end up being considered by an arborist. I believe we still have an arborist, at least when Mr. Zimmer was around, I know we had an arborist that we relied on, who would come out and say, "Nope, that tree is structurally sound," or "That tree is really dead," or "That tree is really a danger," and they would make the professional assessment with regard to that. So the council, I believe, would end up having the ability to end up saying, "Yeah, if we end up having a dead tree and it's in the city right-of-way, then indeed we could end up allowing for that to end up being removed." But I think that is something where I don't know if there's necessarily a consensus with respect to that position, obviously, it's up to your body.
There's also cases, I get a lot of cases where I'm contacted, where they can't get DPW out to approve taking out this particular tree because it's technically quote-unquote "healthy," but there's a lot of branches that have sprouted, and then they start lifting the sidewalk, and people just don't like, you know, they don't like the aesthetics. They've got their house all done up very nicely, but then you got a tree that has a lot of branches and are lifting the sidewalk up or...
Or they're falling out from the top.
Or falling out from the top. I mean, I actually, just myself alone, I've probably gotten about, last, probably about 30 days, probably about eight or 10 emails from different residents, have concerns about trees that they want to take out. So the question is, if we decide as a body to go in that direction where we would allow residents to take out a tree, even if it's healthy, so long as they replace it with a tree approved by the city, is that something that can be done, and maybe we'd have to speak as a body?
Well, again, we're saying in the city, the boulevard, the city right-of-way, whatever you want to call it.
In the easement part, which is between the sidewalk and the street.
Right, yes. My sense is I would have to actually really evaluate that. There are two different tests having to do with this unconditional or this unconstitutional conditions being imposed. In other words, I don't know if it ends up opening up the city to potential liability because now we're saying you could end up removing these trees under certain conditions, but we're gonna make it conditional, which is part of the problem with the Canton ordinance.
Is that the one where they took out almost an acre of trees or something like that?
They took out a ton of trees, yeah.
That's the one?
And then, then the township said, "You owe like tens of thousands of dollars to our tree fund."
Yeah, I remember that.
And ultimately, it said, "No, you can't do that." And also, you didn't make an individual assessment about whether or not some of these trees, which were clearly dead and problematic, were, you know, that there was some offsetting value in terms of them being taken out. So I would have to evaluate that. I think, you know, it'd be something that, if that's where the direction the body wants to take, I could look into that and see how we can do that, and make sure that it's gonna conform to this latest decision.
For me, that's my main concern, but let's, go ahead, Council.
Yeah, let's, you know, also remember not to shoot the messenger. So you have some proposed ordinances drafted, and we can talk about...
You can tell your...
What we, you know, want, and then Corporation Counsel tells us what's available within the bounds of the law, and I agree with them that, I mean, everyone would want, if you have a tree, let's say the tree is knocking the sidewalk up, be able to remove that tree at your expense so it doesn't damage the sidewalk worse, but the law puts some restraints on that, so it'll be up to our Corporation Counsel to tell us, you know, what that is.
Well, residents can still go through the protocols of going through DPW, they come out and check it. If it's a unhealthy tree, they do take it out eventually, but they've got a backlog. I don't know how many there is, and I don't know if you want to say it, but I, as I understood, it was a year plus, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so if a resident either buys a home or is in a home, and they've got a tree that they just don't like the looks of it, and they want to put something nicer in the easement, my personal viewpoint is they should be able to do that.
And that's my viewpoint also, Council Chair.
And so, Gary, thank you, by the way. I actually, I would appreciate, you know, with respect to this council, that you would, you know, we can look into something like that, where, you know, a year and a half out, I believe there's over, a little, just north over 600 trees from the list that I was last told, is that correct?
About 100, 150 removals and probably 400 trims, 400 trims.
So, to repeat, because those in the audience, I mean, I'm sorry, on Zoom may not be able to hear that. So about 150 trees need to be removed, they have been approved for removal, correct? And about 400 that need to be trimmed. What about the number, Director, that need to be looked at? So in other words, if a resident put in a request to have you go check out a tree to see if they can remove it, how big of a backlog on that roughly, if you know?
We're pretty good, I mean, we're, within the week that it comes in...
Okay, so that one you're fine on?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So my, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My last question, Gary, what about private property? You know, somebody's got a, you know, somebody's got a tree in their backyard, and it's massive. And I'll give an example, my sister's was struck, and half of it fell on the neighbor's garage, and the other half fell on her property, right? But then there's this whole other half that's just hanging up there on a limb that's eventually gonna fall down. You know, but that only happened because that tree was so massive and it was so big. Mind you, I love trees. Me personally, I'm not cutting the trees out of my backyard, I want to keep as much shade. But you know, you have all the preferences in this community that want their trees on their property to be able to be trimmed. What do we do in that scenario?
Well, trimming is one thing. I mean, removal is the real issue here. And that's where, I mean, if a tree is clearly dead or a danger, then, I mean, we could end up addressing that, and I believe that there would be discretion in the DPW to end up addressing that type of an issue. But if the tree is still sound, right now, the trees are not supposed to end up being removed unless there's gonna be a replacement tree, and even then, they're not supposed to be removed in general. I mean, if someone wanted to end up saying, "Well, I want to remove it," and then again, we get into this whole issue, the whole idea of, you have a constitutional right potentially to end up getting a permit to, say, develop your property, but now we're going to end up making it conditioned on you having to pay into some tree fund. The potential suggestion is kind of, puts us in a more difficult position because now we're moving toward potentially giving people a right that they otherwise might not have under our ordinances, and we could just say, "Look, you can't get rid of the tree." Or, and then when we do so, we say, "But you're not gonna be able to do it unless you end up paying money," and then that causes there to be a taking in violation of the 14th Amendment, Fifth Amendment, in terms of the takings clause. So that's where we get into the problem, if I can just, you know, I'm sorry if that's not super clear, but basically the point is, is that right now, we might end up creating a situation where we have a constitutional violation by virtue of addressing that issue unless we just say, "Look, if you want to cut down trees in your own yard, you can do that without any sort of hesitation." And again, this body at least many years ago was not comfortable with that approach.
So I'm gonna stay on, and Tom Wensel has something to say. Personally, I'm okay with that, because to me, if somebody purchases a home and it's got trees already in the backyard, whether it's three, four, five, or eight of them, and I've seen all kinds in my business, and they personally believe they want their backyard just nice, clean grass and some landscaping, they don't want any trees in the backyard, to me, they should not be forced to have those trees. Like in my backyard, for example, when my home was built, well, in the subdivision, they had taken out most of the trees so they could build a home, but when they built my home, my backyard had no trees, but I wanted some trees, so I put arborvitae's, and I think it's like 20 or 30 of them in the back for privacy, okay? That's what I like. I don't want trees that have been there for 100 years personally. So to me, because it's my house and my castle, I should have a right to take that out if that's what I choose.
Right, and if the council wants to go in that direction, we can easily amend the ordinance that way.
I'm speaking as a person, for myself, not as a body. I mean, the body would have to decide. Councilman Wensel, go ahead.
Let's not be confused, a tree ordinance is just for trees on personal property, nothing on, the tree ordinance doesn't apply to city-owned property.
Well, the tree ordinance actually applies to both. It's actually a pretty expansive ordinance, and that's why when the council chair was saying something to the effect of, you know, giving a summary of it, it's quite a few sections, but actually, one section, Section 3329, permits for tree plantings, care removal, the first sentence says, "The Public Service Administrator," which is actually the technical name under the charter for the DPW Director, "The Public Service Administrator shall have control over all trees located within the streets right-of-way and parks in the city, and the planting care and removal thereof, subject to the regulations contained in this chapter." So it goes beyond simply on private property or public property, it's pretty much all trees.
Well, that section goes without saying. I mean, it's city property, we should maintain them, basically.
Right.
But when I was on the Planning Commission, I don't know, 15 years ago or something, this is where it all started, is there was someone that bought some property over on Beach Daly somewhere, and it had like 30 big oak trees. And one weekend, they came in, they cut them all down, and it was outrageous, everybody was complaining about them, and then they said, "Well, we gotta do something about it." And a matter of a couple months that summer, four or five different homo, a lot of property owners did the same thing, which, you know, provoked us or, you know, got us going on this tree ordinance. That's, and it was a kind of an emergency thing, I think you might have been involved, and Mark Roberts might have been involved. We went to a different city and said, "Hey, let's adopt something really simpler to what they've got, let's get an ordinance going right away." And that's the last time we revised it.
Yeah, I started it, and then I knew Mark had some ideas, so I delegated it off to him, and then he ran with it. And then there've been a few tweaks since then, and sometimes I've worked on them, sometimes Mark worked on them. So, yeah, it's been something that's been years in the making.
I remember one of the people that came to speak at one of our meetings, they said, "You know, these trees were there before those people bought that home, and they'd probably live long after those people moved out of that home." And, you know, they're not humans, trees aren't, but, you know, Dearborn Heights is Tree City, we call ourselves Tree City. I just think we have a designation from the federal government or something as being a Tree City. So we can't say we can't cut down any trees, but we have to have, you know, you gotta have a tree here and there. You know, it's good for air quality, it's good for anti-erosion techniques, you know, and they got a lot of benefits.
Right, and those benefits are, a lot of this is up to your body to figure out. I'll do whatever I get direction to basically do.
Okay, just one second, Council. Yeah, something quick, because I'm gonna allow the administration to say... Yeah, it was just quick, Mr. Miyaki, and I know they're gonna get up and speak, I don't think anybody here is saying, "Remove the tree and no longer put a tree," it's remove the tree and replace it with a new tree.
Unless it sits in your backyard, you know?
Unless it sits in your backyard, correct. If somebody wants to take up the tree in their backyard and have an open field in their backyard to be able to put a swimming pool, or a place for their kids, I mean, me personally, I'm not gonna take down the tree in my backyard. I like it, I planted it. But, you know, if somebody else has a different preference, I don't think we should be able to be the ones to dictate whether, who has a tree in their backyard, or we shouldn't be able to dictate who puts a tree in their backyard or not.
Right, and that again, would be a change from the current ordinance. So if that's what the, if that's what your body wants to do, then I can make the draft changes accordingly.
Okay, so we can't vote right now, obviously, because it's a study session, but if you could put something, tweak their ordinance, and then obviously we'd vote at a council meeting eventually, but before you do, let's just make sure, I'm gonna see if anybody from, I'm gonna have DPW Director, if you don't mind, if you could just give us a word or two. Chief of Staff, would you like to say something? Okay. Okay. So, DPW Director, Robert Conrad, I just wanted to get his, I asked him to be here, if he could be here today, to give us his input as far as from the logistics part, because it sounds easy to say, have them take down trees, cut out this tree, cut out that tree, but obviously, we gotta make sure we have enough infrastructure in place to be able to do that.
Right, so, I mean, right now, if it's a healthy tree, you know, our plan is to leave it. I mean, a good, healthy tree can, you know, yes, do sidewalk damage, but a good contractor, you know, doing the sidewalk replacement, you know, should be able to keep that tree alive for, you know, its natural course, and provide, you know, a good sidewalk for 15 to 20 years if they remove the roots when they do the sidewalk. So I mean, you know, those, you know, just because a tree lifted a sidewalk once, if the repair and maintenance is done to the sidewalk correctly, you know, you shouldn't expect to have a problem for several years, you know, and several, I mean, you know, 15, 20 years before the tree roots get big enough to lift that sidewalk again, because if they're eliminated, you know, it's gonna take them a long time to grow back to this point where they caused the damage they did. And, I mean, we do take trees down, you know, when they get to, you know, that ugly point, you know, the maybe 40% dead. the maybe 40% dead, you know. We'll trim them up, we'll take the dead out when we can, you know, those are the trees on our tree trimming list. You know, they're still providing good shade, you know, doing what everybody, you know, that's environmentally conscious wants a tree to do, you know, provide clean air and shade. But, I mean, I guess where, you know, I would put my input in here is, you know, nuisance trees, you know, we have a list of trees we don't allow people to plant. You know, so I mean, if we were going to make any modifications where we would allow a resident to remove a tree at their cost, I think we would limit it to the trees that are on our do-not-plant list. You know, I guess to give you an example, Norway maple, weeping willow, box elder, sycamore.
Definitely don't want a weeping willow.
Right. So, I mean, you know, those trees on our do-not-plant list, I mean, I think those could be considered for, you know, allowing people to remove those trees, because, you know, we've deemed we don't want them either. But, I mean, we also don't have the ability to take down every one of those trees that we don't want in our right-of-way, because, you know, it's a funding issue. I mean, and I don't think we want to raise people's taxes so that we can take down more trees, you know, or have a contractor take down all these trees. But, you know, there are people who would like to take them down, and if they have the means to do so, I don't, you know.
But they would still need a permit.
Right. Oh, yeah, we definitely want a permit. Yeah, I think we'd, you know, we'd like to see a replacement tree. And we do allow people to take down healthy trees, you know, if you come in and apply for a permit. If you're doing construction, you're putting in, you know, a circular driveway and the trees in the way. We would allow you to take that tree down. Again, you'd have to get the permit, you'd have to put a replacement tree in, you know. But, I mean, this, you know, the ordinance says at our discretion, you know, we'll allow you to take a tree down. It doesn't say that you can't take a healthy tree down. It says at our discretion. And typically, our discretion is, you know, if it's a healthy tree. But if, you know, someone can show good cause as to why it should come out, I mean, we do allow them to come out.
But see, this is where I come, where I'm coming from. If it's a taste thing, you know, you have hypothetically a maple in front of your home, or my home, you know, I'm buying, I buy a home, and if I've got a maple tree in front of it, but I don't want a maple tree. I want some, whatever, other type that's allowed, of course. To me, it should be within my rights to be able to do that, and especially ones in the backyard. But also, can you, can you mention just at least a sense or two in regards to the city tree fund, so that members of the audience can get an idea as far as how that works?
So, you know, the tree permit starts with a minimum of $65. So, you know, if you're a developer, or you have a very large lot and you're taking down several trees that aren't necessarily in the right-of-way, but they're out on your own property and you needed to remove these houses, or these trees to enlarge the footprint of your house, or, you know, put in a different, you know, detached garage or something like that, then that permit, you know, the deep, the supervisory staff would go out, they'd evaluate the trees, and, you know, based on their size and, you know, other factors that they take in, they say, well, you know, they'll assign a value to it, and that money would go into the tree fund. That tree fund is used to put trees back in the right-of-way where we've removed trees that were diseased, dead, and dying. And, you know, those residents that, you know, not all residents would like a tree replaced when, you know, we removed, when we remove a dead, diseased, or dying tree. But those ones who do, you know, at our expense, we put those back. I mean, I guess if we're going to let you take a tree out at your expense, I mean, I don't know. I mean, there was a nice tree there. I mean, I don't know, do we, you know, use our tree fund to put a tree back in? I mean, you took out one that was perfectly healthy. I think if you had the funds to take that out, maybe the person taking it out should replace the tree as well.
I definitely agree. You take out a city tree, you must replace it with another tree, but it has, and it should be a list of trees.
Yes, we do. We have a list of trees.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's, I think that's what the residents are looking for. Like, I'm going to be honest with you. My house on, where I live right now, looks like there was a new tree planted maybe four years ago, five years ago. It's this little tree, it's growing, it's starting to grow big, but it's beautiful. My neighbor's tree looks like it's been there for 35 years. The trunk is huge, it's falling apart. You know, it's constantly falling from the top. And she constantly tells me, her name is Pam, I hate this tree. Really not much I can do for you.
Do you have anything else on your end?
I mean, the only thing, I mean, you know, a lot of the other cities that have these same ordinances that are very similar to ours, and there's been a few communities recently, I think, you know, Gary mentioned Canton. I think one of the Plymouths also, you know, adopted a tree ordinance. And there are concerns about people removing too many trees or removing trees, you know, that are a benefit and, you know, to keep a community healthy and, you know, provide shade, keep it cool, you know, convert CO2 to oxygen, you know, those type of things. But, you know, you know, our heritage tree starts at 24 inches, you know, base height diameter. So, I mean, that might be a consideration if you are going to allow somebody to, you know, take out a tree of their own, you know, do you take into consideration those, you know, what are getting close to historic trees or, you know, heritage trees, landmark trees, those type of things? Or, you know, do you modify that number to be something different? That's, you know, kind of what my suggestions are, you know.
Just to make sure that, this is where the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals had issues. In essence, what they said is, "The government may choose whether and how to permit an applicant to, it's required to mitigate the impacts of a proposed development, but it may not leverage its legitimate interest in mitigation to pursue governmental ends that lack an essential nexus and rough proportionality to those impacts." And the required relationship does not have to be exacting, but it cannot be generalized. So you guys are kind of like talking a little more general. What the court is saying is, you have to really actually think about it and support whatever you come up with. And that's the difficulty that we have with our ordinance, and that's the difficulty with all these other communities that have had these similar ordinances, that essentially, there really was no individualized determination about what was required to end up making up for whatever it was, the environmental impacts, because no one really quantified them, and they just said, oh, let's just do this. And say if it's this, then it's a landmark tree, and we'll have this standard, and, yeah, you'll have to pay this much in, and that's how we'll do it. And, you know, did anyone actually quantify any of that? No. So Sixth Circuit said that that's not going to work. And it might be a little different if we're dealing with a situation where someone says, hey, or where the city says, you have no right to remove this particular tree, for example, in our right-of-way, because we really are the ones who have control over that. But if you want to exercise that kind of right, we can require you to do something with respect to mitigation. And that's what I need to look at more closely, because, like I said, there are two different tests, and it's more than, eh, it sounds about right. That's just not going to cut it.
So one of the things I spoke with the chief of staff about, as I told her, this is not an end-all, this particular meeting. It's just a starting point, so we can start having a conversation and give you some direction until we get to a point where we vote on something and agree on something altogether. Yeah, go ahead, Councilman, and then Chief Staff, do you want to say something? Okay. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, and I think we're all in agreement that if somebody owns the property, I heard what the DPW director said about the, you know, the benefits of a tree, but if it's your property, it's your property. One tree is not going to put that much more CO, oxygen in the air, or, and there's been a lot of situations over the years where there's a tree in front of somebody's house, for whatever reason, everybody says it looks fine, and it ends up blowing over. An example is Ahmad Hamad, a Dearborn Heights resident, had a huge tree that he was complaining about. Also, I don't know how, if the, if the roots of the tree, if the tree is that big that it's popping the sidewalk up, that the, somebody installing the cement can cut the roots that deeply that it's not going to prevent further damage to the sidewalk. And that's a real problem all over the city. So I think, having said all that, I think we're all in agreement that we want an ordinance permissible under the law that says, trees on your property, including the easement, you want to cut it down, you cut it down. If it's on the city easement, there may be certain requirements that, yeah, you get a permit and that you have to replace it, or pay into the tree fund or whatever, but you want to be able to remove that tree. Because people will call, there's a resident on my block, he's been calling for 20-some years about a big limb hanging. He wants to be able to get that tree trimmed, and it's a large tree, it's a sycamore, he should be able to do that.
Yeah, I agree. Are we, so obviously, we can't vote, but Gary, if you could put something together in regards to what we've been referencing here, we'd really appreciate it. And of course, eventually, we would vote on it during the council meeting. But that's all we had in regards to this. Next up, in the audience.
Councilor Chair, I just want to make a quick statement. The Councilman Constance said that we're all in agreement on being able to cut the tree down, to an extent. You know, on your own property, I still feel you should be able to replace that tree with a different tree. Not, potentially, you have the chance of having an entire neighborhood without one tree in any of the backyards, only trees would be in the front, between the sidewalk and the street. That's the actual possibility to happen.
I mean, I personally don't foresee, like, you know, on any block, I think you may have one or two, maybe three people do that. So I don't think it's going to have a major impact personally.
Never know. I said, replace it with another tree.
Okay.
Again, you can say, replace it with another tree, but once you open the floodgate, you potentially can't do that. That's the point. The point is, is that that's what the council did and said, hey, you can do whatever you want if you replace it with another tree. Then your difficulty is, the Sixth Circuit's decision was, if you are making it a condition to get the permit, that you have to end up doing this, that's where the problem comes in. So I would see that as more of an issue with what Councilman Wenzel has ended up saying, that that will be more of an issue if we have a requirement that you take it out of your own private property that's not part of the city right-of-way. If it is in the city right-of-way, I'm not sure if that passes constitutional muster, because now you're kind of opening the floodgate, but you're saying, well, but you're going to have to end up doing mitigation. And I'm not sure if that necessarily ends up.
Can you look into it then?
That, well, yeah, I plan to. What I've got right now is, in city right-of-way, provide for removal by property owner if, A, property owner pays for it, B, property owner does it pursuant to permit and sound requirements, or just generally, if it's dead or diseased in the way. And if they do some mitigation effort, and then I have questionable re, replacement tree. So I'll have to look into that. And then I have for, in property owner's yard, not in city right-of-way, then the property owner can just remove it. That's what my understanding is.
And then the last question was, they would still have to pull a permit if it's in their, yeah, they would still have to pull a permit.
Right, right. They would still have to pull a permit and make sure, you know, I mean, so it doesn't fall on someone, right? So, okay.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen? Do you want to add, do you want to answer this? You're good. So I'm going to allow residents to get up in case they have any questions, concerns in regards to this. Anybody on Zoom? Have any questions? Doesn't look like it. Is anybody on Zoom?
Nope, nobody's on Zoom, but we have one at the podium.
Okay. Go ahead, minutes, somebody set the clock?
Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I am one of those people, have one of those dreaded sycamores in front of my house. I've had it trimmed. I've also had to replace my sidewalk twice.
Sorry, close the door.
That's okay. If you's, and I don't feel that I should have to pay to take the tree down. It's your city tree, they're a nuisance, and they're a danger. I've sent, I don't know how many videos I have sent you, where healthy branches that you call healthy from the tree just, boom, fall. So I can't park my car in front of the street, and then I have a neighbor behind me who has five oak trees, which has become a problem because of the power lines behind me. I can't get a private company to come out and trim them out of my yard. They're about 15 feet into my yard. They won't come out because they hang way above the DTE lines. So they said it's a DTE issue. I call DTE, they won't trim the tree, because they say it's not hitting the lines. So now I have five oak trees behind me, and I can't park my, it's getting to the point where I'm beginning to park my car in my driveway because they drop nuts, and then my car's going to have dings all in it. So what do you do to help somebody like me who's in that situation? And that's like, my tree's, my sidewalk's starting to lift again. I don't feel that I should have to pay to have my sidewalk replaced again.
Did DPW ever look at your tree to see if it's, you know, based on the current ordinance, healthy or not?
Well, they're going to say it's healthy. It has leaves, it looks fine, but, I mean, branches just fall. I've sent numerous videos, and I've paid to have it trimmed already.
And this is where.
I've already paid to have it trimmed.
Yeah. See, to me, okay, well, okay, so there's two sides to this. To me, you should have a right to be able to take it out at your own, that's for me personally, speaking, at your own expense. But you're saying, no, that's a tree that's causing havoc, and therefore, the city should possibly take it out.
All the sycamore trees are a liability to the city with the way the branches fall. And I don't know if you, the storms that came in on the north end, if you looked at most of the trees that fell over, they were sycamores, and a lot of them had huge holes in them. I've seen quite a few of them. But they're a nuisance tree. I mean, I've sent you guys videos that, you know, they just, huge branches, boom, crash to the ground. Green, no wind, no nothing.
But you've had the city come on and check out, you said you.
Oh, yeah, they've been out several times. And it's not, it's not their issue. And I don't know, 20 years ago when I moved in, 22 years ago, they had a policy in place, and they had a private company, I believe, I can't remember, that they were allowed to take out trees, and it was at a considerable lower rate. But you had to replace another, with another tree, because my brother did that at his house. So I don't know if that's something that we could look into, get a contractor.
Unfortunately, do I have an answer for you?
Well, no, I just don't know if we could get like a contractor like they did years ago, previous years ago, to come in that would do it at a discounted rate if people wanted the trees cut down, but they have to replace them. I don't know if that would be an option to try and do something like that.
That's, Dearborn Tree, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I'm sure who did it those many years ago, but, you know, the sycamore trees are just a nuisance.
I think if we put something like this together, maybe we could work out something, maybe with a contractor, like we did for the city sidewalks, where it's the same contractor, do it en masse, you know, in masses, it's much cheaper.
That's what I'm saying. And then I have a storm drain in front of my house, so guess who picks all that up?
Right.
So I'm up there with boots on up to my knees, cleaning all that up too, so, all right.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Angela.
Treppowski, Columbia Street, just a suggestion.
I'll get in trouble with the clerk's office, Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan. Just a suggestion. Can somebody look into Michigan State Forestry Division? They've got a lot of programs out there. Maybe they've got some grant monies or something that they can, we can use to take care of some of these tree issues that, you know, people are having in their front yards. But also, maybe a program to look at the overall trees that are suggested for being planted in the city or something like that too, instead of nuisance trees.
Okay. So Bob Conrad, maybe either between you, maybe Gary, if you could look into, if you don't mind, just to see if that's possibly an option, some sort of grants for the city, if you don't mind? Bob, is that something you could look into, if you don't mind? Okay, so Bob will look into it. Thank you.
Hello, Rachel Lepoint, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Same kind of thought that Vince had about bringing in some outside people, since we're going to be starting the master plan process. If we could get an environmental group, or a nonprofit, or MSU, and the extension there, to come in and look at what the recommended amount of tree cover for our city would be. Because then the DPW could say, okay, we have this percentage that is the ideal percentage for our city in terms of environmental, like, goodness, I don't, can't think of the right word. But then that way, it's better for the earth, because we've got this whole climate change thing going on. And while I understand that somebody might prefer a sunnier backyard, especially maybe a gardener, too much sun is a really bad thing in terms of temperature. I would not want to have my neighbor cut down their giant tree in the backyard and all of a sudden have my air conditioning bill go through the roof, because now my home is 20 degrees warmer. I could, but trees take a long time to grow, so shall I, like, I mean, in a way, it's kind of like, we're going to have a lot of problems. Like, I mean, in a, in a way, it's kind of like, we're going to have a lot of problems. Hang on, let me finish my comment, please, Mo, please. So, I'm concerned that if, kind of what councilman Wenzel said, that if we leave it open to whoever wants to cut their stuff down in their backyards, we could end up with that. And your job as legislators is not just to look at the current problem, but how the effects of the ordinance could continue into the future. And I'm very concerned about the environmental impact, considering everything every leading scientist is saying. So, please, 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 look into that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
We got one on Zoom, can we go on Zoom real quick?
Yeah, that's going, well, he's already stood up, so go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening, so head up, Ha, Dearborn Heights.
Street name, I'm sorry.
354 Rosemary.
I know it, but I, they have to have it for record.
Next time, I'm going to put the plaque here with 354 Rosemary.
354 Rosemary.
Anyway, when we do any ordinance, there must be a purpose which serves the public, the safety, the environment in general. That's the purpose of any ordinance. So, when we write or we modify this ordinance, we must have a vision. What do we want from this ordinance to accomplish? I see lots of people who move into the city to large lots, they have 20, 30 trees, and on the weekend, those trees disappear. Now, when you cut the trees, do you need a permit for each tree? Or one permit for 20 trees is enough? When you cut one tree, do you replace it with another tree similar? Or how much money you put into the tree fund? Or when you cut the 20 or 30, what you replace it with? I think the environment is very important. We have lots of birds, we have lots of squirrels, we have lots of different species living on the trees in this city. I think this ordinance must have teeth, not just, you know, ordinance we wrote and everybody is happy we voted on it. What are the teeth for this ordinance? What we do to the violators who will come on the weekend especially, and we all know that it's happening in our city, they cut so many trees. What do we do? Is it? Is it a fine for $500, this misdemeanor? What is it? We need to specify the penalty for these things. And yes, you have the privacy, you have the right to cut the trees in your backyard, but you have obligation to the environment in this city. We have obligation to the future of this city, and we have obligation to make sure that we live in good environment. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, we have Tim memory.
Can the, please?
Tim, okay, and Tim, can you do me a favor? Are you speaking as a resident or as a TIFRA board member?
Resident.
Okay.
Okay, Tim memory, 25837 Eaton, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Last year, I had several squares of my sidewalk replaced. And already, and I have a big maple tree in front of my, in the city's stretch, and it cut some of the roots out, but already, I'm getting lift out of my new sidewalk. So, I, I think the whole thing is- Glad I'm not in city council.
Tim, 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 you got cut off when you said, "I think the whole thing," then you got cut off.
Okay, I think, I think the whole thing is like a, going to open a can of worms that the- I don't know how they're going to do it.
Okay, you, you got cut off again after a can of worms.
It's going to be a big problem. How's that?
Unfortunately, not good. All we guys, it's going to be a big problem, so I'll give you one last chance. I'm sorry, but the internet connection is not working well.
That's all I said. My, my connection's good, you guys keep freezing up, so.
It could be.
Our new, okay.
Let's give it one last shot, Tim, go ahead.
But yeah, it's, maybe have a commission for tree, overlooked trees or something like, like that, I don't know.
Okay.
That's what I got, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Anybody else in the audience in regards to the tree ordinance? You had something else in regards to that? Yeah, come on.
Council chair, while he's, while he's walking up, I got a quick, go ahead. Walk too fast.
So, it's one permit per property, you know, so if you have, want to take down several trees on your property, it's still just one permit per property, but-
The cost goes up, I presume.
The cost goes up for more trees, right? And maybe the, you know, the size of the trees, the cost may go up too. The most common tree we had during the storm was the maple tree. Not that we didn't have sycamore trees, you know, drop branches and things like that, they did, but only one sycamore tree actually, you know, came down or broke to the point where, you know, we're going to have to take the rest of it down, you know, the type thing, and, you know. So, I mean, a sycamore is a very strong tree, it's just a nasty tree. So, I mean, you know, I, I really, I mean, don't have a problem with, you know, like a nuisance-type clause to our ordinance. And I mean, if we want to consider sidewalk heevil a nuisance, I, you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm not an authoritarian that, you know, says, "No, if it's a live tree, it's got to stay." But I mean, I do believe trees have a value to each community. I mean, we have a considerable, we have a considerable amount of trees in my neighborhood, and it is 10 degrees cooler in my neighborhood today than it is in any other neighborhood around me. And, you know, I, I value the trees that are in my neighborhood, but, you know, everybody has their own opinion and their own rights.
But again, just to add, we're not saying that people can take out trees and just leave it bare. They have to put in another replacement. It won't be obviously as large, but they would have to put in the-
But-
Eventually, it will be, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not in that person's lifetime will they gather the benefits of what they took out.
I know, and, and it's unfortunate that we're having this issue, and it's before your time, it's before my time, it's before this administration's time. A lot of the trees have grown drastically, and I don't know if they were being well-maintained 10 years ago, 15 years ago. And I'm not here to point fingers and go back and forth, but right now, we're dealing with an issue. And the issue is, we're a year and a half out on, on fixing trees, being able to trim them and remove them. These, these are the facts, and, and I can tell you, I, I swear, people are calling me today about their tree, I'm just telling them, "We're so backed up, there's nothing that can be done for you this year." I'm not even calling to, to DPW. I'm just telling the resident, "You have to hold off right now. We, we don't have the manpower, man or woman, power for it." And believe it or not, nothing's going to be happening for at least the next year, a year and a half, or two-year treat. I'm sorry, I, I mean, that's just the answer that I have, because that was the answer that I was given.
And the last thing, if a resident, Bob, Robert, if a resident wants to have their tree looked at, do they call, do they go on the website, the email, what is the best format?
I mean, you can call the, the DPW, and, you know, one of the supervisors will, will come out and take a look at the tree. You know, they can also email the, the DPW, Dearborn Heights, you know-
Off the website.
Off the website.
And what is the phone number if you don't mind? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Council chair.
Dave, do you think maybe the residents wouldn't have such an issue with the trees if they were at least trimmed? Because like, the tree next door to me, it's almost touching their house, their sycamore tree. And maybe the residents wouldn't be so upset about the sycamores in front of their house if they were at least trimmed? I mean, I've lived there 20 years, and I was put on a tree, I don't know how many times it's been trimmed.
Actually, you reminded me about a question, thank you. I'm not sure if it's Gary or Director Robert can answer this. So, on one particular residence, for example, in their backyard, they have major overgrowth onto somebody else's backyard. Who would enforce something like this, being trimmed down to stay within their fence line?
Michigan laws that you can trim.
I mean, ordinance would have to write the ticket, but my staff would go out and evaluate the tree.
So, if, so, I'm, I'm talking like, technically, it starts as weeds, and they grow into bushes, and then they grow into trees. So, I know of a particular resident that's got that issue, and they called me, and I went and looked at it, and I told them, "Contact DPW," but I said, "I'm not sure at this particular point." But if there's House A, that has a, what starts as weed, and becomes a bush, and becomes a tree, kind of, sort of, but it's going all over into House B's backyard, A, who's responsible for trimming that on the B side?
It, it, it would be the property, I mean-
But let's say they don't want to.
The property owner can trim up, you know, can take his property line extended and trim, even if the tree isn't on their property.
But to me, it would seem like it would be the responsibility of property A, since it's their tree.
I mean, it's their tree, but yes, if they don't respond, then that property owner can do the property-
Okay.
And you have these situations, you have these situations that develop where then someone gets accused of trespassing because they're trying to do something with respect to going on someone else's property.
No, no, just stay on your own yard.
So, generally, the way, the way it gets done is if someone's growing, then you can end up, again, as the DPW director said, "Look, I can end up chopping anything that's going over into my property."
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, at this particular point, this- Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, councilman.
Quick commenter said, you, you mentioned the natural existence of lifespan. That was one of the issues I brought up when we did the tree ordinance. And these maple trees that are probably 90% of the problems that we've got in the city, they've already reached their maximum life, not lifespan, but existence. Now, they're getting too big for their own, for their own good, to carry their own weight. Is that correct? Because I know, I know back in the 60s, when the, the city was planting trees, there were all the maple trees, and we did, somebody did some, came into one of our meetings and said, "Well, these trees only have a 45 to 50-year existence where they're useful." After that, they get too big, and they start falling over, the tops get too heavy and for the, for the area that they're planted. Did you guys take into consideration anything like that when you, you decided which trees are favorable? The amount, how fast they grow, or, you know, the life cycle, the life, the usefulness of the tree?
I'm pretty sure it's just based on, you know, the overall health of the tree when they look at it. You know, I mean, I don't know, I mean, if anybody can really determine when a tree is going to die, you know, just because it, just because it's, you know, I mean, there, there's maples that, you know, can grow to be 48 inches in diameter, you know, you know, do, you know, I don't know if anybody can, can make that, you know, where is too mature, you know, or where, you know, to say that, you know, this, this tree's going to die in the next 10 years, so we should take it out anyways. I mean, you know, that, that's like saying, "Well, nobody should live over the age of 65." I mean, even though there's people in their hundreds, I mean.
Well, that was one of the things that was brought up, and we had, I don't know, tree specialists or something, they, they're the one that brought to our attention that these particular, the white maples, I think they are the ones that are abundant in Dearborn Heights. They, their existence, their usefulness is only so long. Otherwise, they get, they get too big at the top, they'll tumble, they'll fall over in a windstorm, they, they attract ants, you know, all, all the things, all the problems were happening. But, I mean, the trees, is the maple on your list of appropriate trees?
Yes. I mean, make sure, so the only one that's on our do-not-plant is the Norway maple, which, you know-
That's probably the ones we got all over the city.
But, yeah, the, the Red Sunset Maple, the Red Maple, you know, those are all on our plant list, the Trident Maple, I mean, there's, there's several other species of maples that are, that are on our list, but.
Is there something maybe you can, you know, check into a little bit if, you know, some botanist or something might have some kind of input?
Well, I guess when I, you know, look at the, you know, contact Michigan State, and, you know, I can then ask about white maples.
Well, just trees in general, with, you know, so you're, you're planting a tree in a three-foot section of dirt between a sidewalk and the street, you know, which, which, which is a good tree to plant there?
Okay.
Okay, so I'm, I'm being told on a regular basis, you guys got to come up as close as possible to the microphone, because they're having a hard time on the recording. Okay. Mariana, last one, come on up.
Good afternoon, Council Chair, Mariana Hernandez, Chief of Staff, City of Dearborn Heights. I just wanted to clarify, if you do have a tree issue with your neighbor, and you need somebody to take a look at it, you need to call DPW. Our ordinance officers are the ones who issue the tickets, but they do not have the right to go into people's backyards. The only person that can do that for our ordinance is our DPW staff. So, it has to start with DPW. Once they determine if there is a problem with that tree, they can ask ordinance to issue a ticket. It starts with DPW always, when it comes to trees.
Thank you, Mariana, for the clarification.
Director, I want, I want to tell you, thank you for taking care of that tree issue. I called them or emailed them the other day about a tree blocking a stop sign, and they came out and took care of it, thank you.
I mean, that's important, thank you for bringing that to our attention, because those are safety issues.
Yep.